All right, I will call the meeting to order. Please rise and bring us a little bit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome, everybody. Nice to see you here tonight. And next item is what's called, please, in attendance. Before we approve the agenda, I do have one change to make. And item three will not be a presentation by Jody Ekis from Ekis Design. We will have an update on the rebranding done by Mr. Paul. So please make that change. And just to clarify also, we will not be considering approval tonight, but we'll have an update. So with that change, would entertain motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Ethan, second by Bob Jensen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next is first open forum, and I'll call on Peter Eaton.
How are you guys?
Good.
All right, well, my name is Peter Eaton. I'm a teacher here at the high school. I'm speaking to you this evening regarding the impending budget cuts that have been suggested by Principal Nelson. That includes closing the middle-level alternative program, which is for seventh and eighth graders at the high school, the program that I run. I've been running the middle-level ALC for the last eight years here in Mora. I have 17 years' experience in alternative education and 23 years' experience as a teacher. I must mention to you, I feel it's short-sighted to reduce services to at-risk kids. These are the kids that stick around town. They help me out when I have issues with things that I know nothing about. These are the kids that admire and respect us for our willingness to bend the rules or redefine what is important when it comes to their learning. We help personalize learning for them. We allow them to exist successfully in a place that frustrates and beats them down on a daily basis. They will drop out and you will lose ADMs. They are not cut out for what the mainstream offers. School is the last place they want to be, yet it's the only place that they can be. I have benefited so much from the contact I have had with these types of kids, and I was never that kid. I've learned so much from them. I will bring that to my new position, and I'll be richer for that experience. If those misfits, the square pegs, and hurting kids are still going to be roaming the hallways, then I'm going to be sad for them. Solving a short-term problem on the backs of the very kids that provide us with the majority of our school's compensatory funds does not sound like funding equity to me. As a parent in the school district, it's my hope that all of my children's classmates are supported, because as you know, when we all do better, we all do better. Thank you for listening.
How many kids do you have?
Fourteen.
Thank you.
And it's things that we do need to hear, to consider, and never easy. Really respect you for what you do in that program also, and all aware of, and it has happened there in the last few years, so appreciate you advocating. Is there anybody here to address the board? I don't have any other requests. Okay, with that, we're going to back up, because after amending the agenda, I blew right through what we just amended, as well as Mustang Spirit, so we're going to go back. We're going to do Mustang Spirit. So, Mr. Nelson.
I have one. Michelle, would you come up here, please? I would like to thank Michelle Presley for all she does for our schools. She is a huge advocate for at-risk youth, from job placements to career exploration, accessing different community resources, to managing our three or four student proteges we have.
Three, yes.
She has kind of helped bring grant money into our school district. And, you know, the recent CNA class we had, Michelle spent a lot of time processing all 10 of the young ladies to find out if they were qualified for some Central Minnesota Jobs money. I just, without you, we wouldn't have a strong relationship with Central Minnesota Jobs, Training Services. It's helped us and our students in so many ways. I just want to thank you for all you've done.
It's been great. They're able to help these students with their CNA scrubs and then other necessities they needed, so it's great. Thank you very much.
Anytime we can provide in-house, things like that.
Yeah.
That's just amazing.
Yeah.
And thank you for, I think, Spirit had that.
Yeah.
She took a lot of time to do that.
Yeah, but she was a great volunteer. They were big troopers. It was a long time. It was a big process, but they hung in there and they did great. And then won often.
Yeah?
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
All right, Mustang Spirit from the elementary.
We wanted to recognize Chris Sampson. She can't be here tonight because she's working, but she is stepping down from her position as the PTO chair for the elementary. We just have, we really appreciate her support and what she brings to that position. She runs the meetings, they do the book fair, the yearbook.
Yearbook. She's taken on a lot of tasks over the last few years and done them very successfully. Doesn't get a lot of praise, but she does a lot of them.
She's been president for a few years. I can remember back to when I was arm-twisting to convince her that she was the one, and what an amazing job she did. I don't know why I remember that.
It's a little twisting, because it's kind of my position. But, yeah, it is, it's a lot of work, but it's really rewarding.
So we were just discussing, how long has it been?
Five years.
Is it five years?
Yeah.
I'm just guessing, but I remember her stepping up rather, I'm sure, once they reluctantly, but she did a great job.
She's done a fabulous job.
She's expanded, she's expanded, done expanded things with the PTO, things that I would have been so terrified to do. So she's really quite the leader there.
And on a personal note, when I first started, this woman came into my office. She comes right in, sits down, and she's like, "You're the new principal, I need to introduce" me as well. I'm like, "Okay, who are you?" Yeah, it was her, and we just formed a bond, and she's just great. Fun to hang out with. Thanks, Doris. All right, any other Mustang Spirits? Okay, if not, we will move on, in order, hopefully, to the presentation of the Mora Schools rebranding, or an update. And are you giving it together?
We'll just give you a couple of updates here. Yep, you want to turn that? So, last month, we had given a presentation about what the committee has done and what Jody Ekis has compiled. We have some great things. Over the last few weeks in March, we've done some brainstorming with other staff and gotten additional feedback. We had a strong consensus that this was a good look for us, but there were a few features that needed some adjustments still. And we've been collecting that information through, Mr. Bocky, you want to just talk about student council meeting?
Yep, I asked to give an update to student council, and I don't know if I mentioned it before, but very well received. Up until about that point, with that full body, the air kind of was let out of the room. So that was a talking point, a theme. Is this the direction we're going to go, or are we going to tweak this? And I think the decision was made that there was a different direction to go with the full-body look. So we went around and got some feedback there, and from there, we've got a different look.
We've had a little bit of a short month with March.
Yeah.
Short month to begin with, and then we had some spring break, and the designer had some vacation. So we were hoping to do a different presentation tonight, but we wanted to make sure that we had everything right and take some additional time to get additional feedback, finish the presentation, so that next month, we can have everything ready to present for the final approval. She has taken feedback. She did a sketch for us to make sure that feedback was on the right path. We shared that with a number of people, and she came back this week with that sketch. So throughout the last few days, Mr. Bocky, myself, and others have been going around trying to get information on feedback for this design. That was specifically from the Thursday and Friday meetings that we had with coaches and staff. There were a lot of great points that they liked. That full-body horse was not one of them. So we added, we asked for feedback about what direction should we go, and we showed a couple of different designs. This one is similar to Cal Poly, and the coaches felt like that was something that they liked better than the other design. So she did an initial sketch. We gave some feedback, and then she came back with this this week. Overall, this week, it's been positive. There are still things that we want to adjust, and we've given Jody feedback for that. She thinks the next draft will come back next, mid to late next week. Three things that stood out, still puffy hair, so we're going to tone that down. We're going to put it on a diet. It's a little hefty.
(Laughter). And too much. Amy's chair might come back.
And a little bit too much gray. So Jody emailed us back this afternoon, and she said she's updated the artist, and we'll be able to accomplish all those changes that we've asked for. So once we get it next week, we'll continue to collaborate with the staff and try to get that design to make sure it's the right one. Anything that we missed, Mr. Bocky?
No, I think.
Next week, we have, we did also share this with board advisory. Not this design, the overall branding. And then we have a student council this week.
Yep, I've asked to update student council again next week on Thursday. I did give a sneak peek to Drew, and he really appreciated that the profile had been changed. He likes this viewpoint. And the three things that Mr. Paul just said, he picked those out in a heartbeat. It looks big, it's got too much gray, and the hair's puffy. So that's been the consistent feedback. Those adjustments will be made.
The additional feedback that we did request was to take the positive attributes from this and just change this one slightly, so that we could have the same horse with a different profile look. The eye, the nostril, and the mouth were positively received here, so we've asked her to update that on this one, so it's consistent. We would have the headshot facing you, potentially, the side profile, and then the full body as part of that selection brand style guide.
Thank you. And it's something, I know you have been talking for quite a while now, but I think in the long run, everybody agrees that the time it takes is going to be time well spent just to.
Yeah, and I was actually going to say that.
Let it.
Throughout that process, there was a lot of comments about, yes, we need to do this. We just need to make sure we get it right. Everyone recognizes that we are in different, going in different directions, and we want to be in one united directions.
And if there's a chance that we will be able to act on it next month, I think it would be really nice to have our student board members here, and if not, them have some students represented that could be part of the discussion if.
I think.
Can you be? And I was going to make sure that happened tonight. Until I realized it wasn't going to happen tonight, then no worries. But if we're going to be moving on, it would be good to have.
The intent is to, hopefully, we get that updated from, you know, the major themes that we've shared with her, get that new updated, and then share that with student council, and then we can be back.
Keep them, I'm surprised, the schedule for the meeting, or that it's going to happen, and we would like to have somebody here. Great, thank you, guys. Any other thoughts from the board? Yep, moving forward, so. All right, with that, we are to the consent agenda. Are there any requests to remove any items? If not, it entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Tammy. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, item eight, consideration of the preliminary budget and assumptions for this year 2019 and '20. Mr. Schultz, you have the floor, you can take us through it.
Okay. In your board packet is the cover sheet, the main sheet. Just a little bit about our budgeting process. We do three budgets during the course of the year. And a budget is an estimate, a guesstimate, our best guess of what the budget will be. This is the preliminary budget, and this isn't a required budget, but it's a budget that we do when we're directed by the board to take a look at our anticipated revenue and expenses for the following year. We like to have this done prior to the first of April, so that staff members that, in the years that we are required to make reductions, that they have an opportunity to get out into the job market and find another job, if that so is the case. So the way we started out with this, if you remember, back at the, I think it was the January, February, January board meeting, and we had about 15 minutes in between presenting the revised budget, and then we were directed to look at the expenses for the following year. And so the way we start that process is that Tammy works with CMERDC, and we do the best job that we can projecting the revenue for the upcoming year. One of the biggest components of that is the number in the lower left-hand corner, our ADMs, our average daily membership. Most all of our funding is tied to actual student numbers, and so that number is very key in establishing what that revenue is going to be. From there, then, we talk to the building principals, as well as the community ed director, we talk to food service director, technology, transportation, all of the various departments, and have them work on what they project their expenditures would be, based on the needs that they have within their departments. Going down the left side of the page, where the fund is listed, the operating fund, food service, community service, those are what we call the pots of money. And so, such as the food service fund, O2, we can't purchase a bus out of there, we can't hire a kindergarten paraprofessional out of there, it can only be spent for food service. Within the community service piece, the community ed, there are three different categories theirs, and those are required to be spent in those categories by the serves function, the serves piece, that tells us what and how each of those various funds can be spent. In the construction fund, O6, there you'll see that we have revenue of $177,000. We don't actually have our projecting revenue. That's the one, the prepaid lease with First Light, and so we are required to show that as revenue each year for the lease that was prepaid, that's already been spent. In the expenditures, there is $400,000 that's left in the construction fund, the Mora Elementary, or Trailview Elementary, I don't remember what exactly we called that on the front end before we changed the name, but that was that bond and that construction piece. There's $400,000 left in there. The one remaining thing that we have in there, as per the question, is the tennis courts. And so that $400,000 will be spent on the tennis courts. The debt service, we are allowed to, and that is the debt service, that's the piece that funds those construction programs and pays those bonds back. We are allowed to charge 105 percent, and that is to see to it that if there are some tax-forcused properties that don't pay taxes, that we still get the right amount. Believe Tammy, when we get up to 5 percent over, don't we have to then give money back? We're only allowed to be at the 105.
Towards the end of the debt service.
Okay. So we can't build that thing, just because we charge 105 percent doesn't mean we get to keep that, but we have to balance that out. We're never allowed to have more than we have, or I'm sorry, more than we need, but we do, are allowed to charge the 105 percent. So you do see a difference there of the two numbers, that we would be taking in a little more revenue than the expense, but that does get carried over. That, too, is a pot of money and can't be spent anyplace else. The top third of the page is the one that we focus on the most and will focus on this evening. That's the general fund, the transportation fund, and the capital expenditure fund, funds O1, O3, and O5. Again, the way that we start out with the revenue, we take a look at how many students we anticipate. So we take a look at what we have this year, we take a look at our trends from the past three years. Are those student numbers going down? Are they going up? Are they remaining flat? And 1,615 is the number that Tammy and I are comfortable with. That's the number of students that we have right now. The past couple of years, we've been very stable. If you recall, last year, we based this on 1,620 students, so we did reduce it by five students, to give us a small cushion there, because there is potential that we could lose students between now and the end of the year. So 1,650 is what that revenue is based on. The expenditures, then, we take a look at each of the building administrators, take a look very specifically, as well as transportation. And then our capital funds. Our capital funds make up our long-term facility maintenance money, our health and safety money. We also get some operating capital that comes in through that account that can be spent on some various things, but it's not like the gen ed money or the general fund money that can be spent on most everything that we have in the district. Within that, those accounts, you can see then how the expenditures compare with the revenue. The upper right-hand corner is a negative $495,000. That is in the red, and we are proposing, and this comes as an administrative recommendation. This isn't just from me or just from Tammy. This comes as a recommendation from my administrative team, which are our building principals, our technology director, transportation director, et cetera. Of that $495,000, you'll see under the general fund, a negative $176,000. In the transportation fund, $122,000. The capital fund of $196,000. Total, this will be about $145,000 in the red in operating. One thing that we have done is, in the expenditure of the, or the sale of the Fairview property, that money goes into the general fund. And in there, we have had proposed to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as the Finance Committee, that not only when we put in the tennis courts, that we also put in additional parking to address the handicap accessibility, as well as those ball fields on the backside of the field. So $350,000 of that makes up the parking lot for that, which does leave us at a minus $145,000 in the red in operations. If you take a look, do you have any questions on that front page? Okay. If you turn the page, then, this gives you a little more detail of what those numbers are and what they mean. Again, our revenue is based on 1,615 total students. 124 of those are graduating seniors. We also know that we have 141 sixth graders that will be coming into seventh grade. The biggest guesstimate for us on this is what our kindergarten will be, and at this time, we're projecting about 103 to 105 kindergarten. And so we're anticipating that we will not meet that 110-student threshold to have a sixth section.
We have not held kindergarten roundup yet, though.
We have not. We've just really been proactive and seeking out all that age kids, so we kind of have a pretty good idea right now.
Okay. We'll see. We never know.
So that's our student numbers and our revenue piece. On the expense side, within that, we have supplies at both the high school and the elementary. We use a rule of thumb of that on a per-student basis to come up with the numbers. These numbers are actually representative of what the building principals have requested for supplies, and those supplies make up such things as workbooks, staples, all kinds of various components that are used both in the classroom and in the offices. So $120,000 at the high school, $125,000 at the elementary. Capital outlay is not complete at this time, because there are more requests than there are dollars available for that capital money. But it does, I want to make sure that you are aware, it does include that parking lot up at the elementary, that will be backed by the, where the tennis courts are going, back by the softball fields, which is $350,000. There is, in the high school, $11,000 that has been authorized, as well as $33,000 at the elementary. Within the technology, if you recall, the past few years, we have been going with leases or loans. Initially, we talked leases. We found out we could get a better interest rate through our local banks on a purchase than we could on a lease through leasing companies. And so we have been doing it on loans, or basically on a lease. What that does is it encourages us to stay current on our technology, and so our intent is to build up to three to four of those loans, so that we know each year what we have to expend on that. The existing technology loan that we have is $57,000, and the new technology loan that we would be taking out would be $65,000. In staff development, there's a statute that says 2 percent of your gen ed money must be set aside for staff development. Of that, the teaching staff can vote back 50 percent of that, and historically, for the past 10 years that I've been here, they've done that each year, so that amount would be $114,000. In transportation, that number on the front does include a new bus replacement at $90,000 and a van purchase at $20,000. With the bus replacement pieces, the number of bus routes we have, and the average life expectancy of those buses, we should be replacing about 1.5 per year. This budget only includes one, and not 1.5 or two. Community ed, their fund balance has grown to a level that they should spend a little bit more, so theirs is a slight decrease. The same thing in food service. Again, both of those funds can't be used for any operational expenses, other than the ones that they're identified for. Buildings and grounds, if you recall, just a few years ago, we were getting about $225,000 in that, plus about $75,000 in health and safety money for about $300,000. The long-term facility maintenance money, the change from the legislature, has kicked that number up to about $600,000 for us. We had a little carryover, so we're proposing that we would be spending $647,000 of that. But again, each of those projects would be reviewed and approved by the Buildings and Grounds Committee before they would be spent. Elementary class sizes at the, would be based on kindergarten, on the agreed-upon number that we've talked about previously, of 22 per class size. So the class size would be 110. We are, and I'll get into the actual staffing, what that means on the actual staffing on the next page. What that will leave us with, based on this year's kindergarten numbers, rolling those into first grade, we have 118 students, which would give us five sections at 23.6 in first grade. In second grade, we have 99, that would give us five sections of 19.8. We looked at that very specifically and talked about whether we should reduce that to four sections or not, but that would push that second-grade number up to 25 per classroom, and we didn't feel at second grade that would be appropriate. In third grade, with 108 students, we would have five sections at 21.6. In fourth grade, we would have five sections for those 122 students, which would be 24.4. In fifth grade, we would have five sections for those 121 students at 24.2. And in sixth grade, we would have five sections at 25.2 for 127 students. So that's what our elementary class sizes will look like, as well as some of those bigger numbers that you've seen in the past. What that actually results in, then, is our staffing reduction recommendations, and that is that at the elementary, we would be cutting one kindergarten teacher and section, which would also include that five-hour-per-day kindergarten para that's in that as well. One sixth-grade teacher, that sixth-grade teacher is, again, is based on 144 students in sixth grade this year coming to the high school. And then 1.0 elementary teacher, which would be, I believe it was a third-grade interventionist or second-grade interventionist that we would be reducing. And so that teacher then would bump into a classroom, which then, when we get to our staffing piece, and you'll see the names come through next month, that those names may not match up with those specific positions, but it's because of the bumping that takes place in the union. At the high school, we're proposing that we do cut the junior-high ALC program, which would be the ALC teacher. And the reason for that is, when that program was started, and I couldn't remember, it was seven or eight years ago, it was started specifically to help bring targeted services dollars into the district, and those targeted services dollars would provide a service for students at risk that had already been identified, as well as would help offset the cost of the junior-high ALC. Those targeted services, numbers of students have dropped significantly. We were at 85 when we started, and we're down to about 50 percent of that. And at that, that just barely breaks even on the targeted services piece. We're also proposing that we cut a .5 dean of students in the high school office, a .5 focus teacher, a .5 industrial tech teacher, and we have a secretary that is leaving at the end of this year, and we are proposing to combine the health para and the counselor's secretary, those two positions into one position. With those staffing reductions that we are recommending, that does still leave us $145,000. hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the red. And so thus the need to reduce staff comes because of the balancing of the budget. And it doesn't get us to zero, but it gets us a lot closer. So that's the proposed budget from the administrative team. Do you have any questions?
Currently, an industrial tech staff is all at full FTEs?
That would leave one of those positions at point five.
You change from.
One of the issues we've had filling that position is that we have an industrial tech teacher who's on leave of absence. And so when we post that, we can't post that as a permanent position. And those positions are tough enough the way it is to fill. And so that does put us at a very disadvantage when it comes to filling that position.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I have a, I don't have a question, I guess I have a statement. I have a hard time, especially in that industrial tech area, because this is something that we're trying to enhance and improve. Like, we're trying to highlight this in our high school for kids as options and choices. And if we're, you know, if we're cutting in that area, that means we're also really cutting classroom hours, I would assume, and classes, which...
I guess that's a good question. Are the classes full now, or is there a way that we can manage? Are we to assume that we're cutting into the program?
Yes. We are cutting into the program. We do have a concept or an idea to grow that program, but it is a shift from what we currently have. And it would take introduction of the new concept. And hopefully that would grow, and we would be adding that back. Whenever we go into staff reductions, it's never easy. It's not easy for staff, it's not easy for students, it's not easy for anybody. It's not easy for you as a board. It's one of the unfortunate things that come about through a multitude of factors. And I have had a half a dozen teaching staff members that have come forward, that I've met with, gone over with them. Once they see the numbers, they say they understand. They may not agree, but they do understand.
A bright spot for me is our elementary class sizes. I can remember years where we were pushing closer to thirty in the sixth grade, fifth grade. And this actually looks good.
Well, one of the things about that, if you look at that, we're proposing that we're cutting three elementary teachers. At the elementary, it's much easier to manage those numbers because of the grade levels. It's much more difficult at the high school. We have a hundred and forty-four kids coming to the high school. And so one of the staff members said, "Well, if we're getting a hundred and forty-four kids, then do we get to add a teacher?" Well, the problem at the high school then becomes, what do you add? You need a point two math teacher, and you need a point two science teacher, and you need a point two this teacher, and you need a point two that teacher. And it becomes very, very difficult to manage. So it is not as clear-cut at the high school as it is at the elementary. If you take a look at those elementary sizes, and this is something that I think all the board needs to be aware of, and I know that Karen and Ethan, ten years ago, we had two hundred more students than we currently have. And if you take a look at those class sizes, and each of those sections at the elementary, when I started here, we were a hundred and thirty kids per grade level on average. And you take a look at what the recession has done to those elementary kids that are coming in, we were told to expect kindergarten at a hundred for five years, based on numbers of births and capture rates. We did hit that hundred basically in second grade currently. We're at a hundred and eight in third grade. We don't have a single one of these that's at a hundred and thirty, which is where we were at ten years ago. This first grader, this kindergarten we have this year has offset that. We haven't lived up to that one hundred, which is nice, but it certainly isn't a hundred and thirty.
Translates into a lot of money.
Okay. Anybody have any further questions? Or maybe willing to make a motion to approve the preliminary budget?
I've spent time with the finance committee and Craig and asked some of the same questions. And I'm comfortable that I'd want to accept the preliminary budget. Well, second, I was ready to know with Ethan, who went over it, and none of it is easy and none of it, you know, we have X number of dollars and Y number of, you know, results.
You guys have been working with it, is there? I'm sure you talked about the possibility of grants or whatever. We're going to try to do as much as we possibly can between now and when this has to be implemented to possibly try to find some more money. I assume that was a discussion?
Well, so, yeah, this is a preliminary one. Obviously, without having, like, all the legislature, all the numbers in there, depending on what they, you know, one of the things I read today was, you know, they're looking at three percent instead of a two percent. You're right there at one percent, that's what, a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and seventy, yeah. Okay. On the other hand, though, that would just get us, even if they added that, now we're back up to zero. So, I mean, we are looking and we said, yeah, we're okay with spending down some of that view of reserve. It's not something we can or will do every year, just we need to keep it there. At first, when we saw the minus four ninety-five, that's when we were about choked, and then went, oh, that's right. The three fifty was like...
Who was going to hold him and who was going to hit him?
And then we realized, okay, the three fifty went in last year, so we were, yeah, we were like, a hundred and forty-five, that made it a lot more helpful, yeah.
Because some of these kids are at such high risk, and they will fall through the cracks, and I'm feeling super guilty, I'll just be honest.
I do, too.
Yeah.
And I do, too. When we hired Pete, he came from a program...
And I'm not even saying Pete or anything, I just say high-risk kids, and I just extremely, we have a lot of them in our community.
And they have to still be absorbed by just that many fewer people than to make sure they don't slip through the cracks.
And one thing about that, too, is we're cutting that primary elementary interventionist. And the conversation was five sections or four sections in that position, so we decided to keep the five sections. So they're going to do a lot of that themselves, and they're highly capable, they can do that. We're also taking a five-hour para that does library help, and we're going to adjust that five hours over to be an interventionist academic para, and put that into the primary program, as well as take some of our para, our Title I money and kind of shove it down the grades, because we know that if we capture the kids early enough, hopefully that gap closes and we get less problems above. So that's kind of our plan, to keep those going in the primary level.
And some of it is, like we were saying before, you know, eight years ago, the number was an eighty, if we're down on that forty now, say, we don't want one of them, none of us, you know, do. But hopefully those interventions, us getting better at this and capturing them early, it's, you know, we don't want anyone to fall through, but, you know.
Thanks for spending a lot of time on it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on, did you get the motion and the second? Ethan, let's go. And so, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes unanimously. I'll get to everybody involved, and, yep, it is preliminary, so. All right, board reports. Board members wish to report on meetings.
No meeting, just helped with...
Board advisory.
Oh, yeah, sorry, board advisory. I always forget that, because it's in the middle of a workday, so I, you know, work, board advisory, back to work. And, but first, I just wanted to share that I ran the PTO pizza sales at Student Showcase. It's always a really fun time. We sold more pizzas than we have any other year, that we have been doing that. Thank you to Emma's Pizza for working with us, they are great. I call them, I say I need ten more pizzas now, they say, we'll be there in fifteen minutes, and that's what happened over and over and over throughout the night. And we can't do it without a lovely Kizzy. She has volunteered for me every single year, and we're kind of a well-oiled machine when it comes to that. And Student Showcase is just wonderful. Kids, families showcasing everything that they do, whether it's arts, or their academics, or their projects, and their performances. It's really a good time, and a lot of grandparents actually enjoy it, too, to just be able to walk around and see everything, so.
Nice to have all that parking space at more elementary for Student Showcase night.
Yeah.
It was full.
It was very full, yes, but, I mean, it'd be the street, though, at least not for... Well, this is true, yeah. I mean, this is true.
At the board advisory, we talked about the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty budget, and it's much worse tonight than it was there. And then we did the, Randy Qual and Nick Bocky did that update, and then we just talked about the revision of the calendar for the rest of the school year, so. Basically, what was spoke about earlier, but, but, the budget was a little bit of a shock.
Well, and if you think about it, when I talked to the board advisory committee, it was all in generality. And when you put it in perspective, what other districts are doing around us, it's...
That's probably what I remember, is the terribly big cuts that other school districts are reminding us, or having to do it. You're absolutely correct.
Well, I, and when I, when I, when I work with the building administrators, it's like trying to get blood out of a turnip. And there's times when I have to ask them to give a pint, and I remind them that giving a pint is a lot easier than giving a gallon. And this year, we're operating, we're in the red. And we're proposing, we operate again in the red next year. And I didn't get held and punched, but I did get my fingers slapped and told that that wouldn't be acceptable next year. So, just looking ahead, I'd much rather give a pint than a gallon.
It has a compounding effect. That's the problem.
That was basically the board advisory.
Well, we hope our sixteen hundred fifteen projected goes up.
Then I was at a meeting today to communications, you heard the report earlier.
Okay, great. Your timing is a couple...
We have a little...
Thanks for coming, you guys, you're up.
Okay. So, student council-related stuff, we just finished our spring blood drive. I think we had a total of fifty-four complete donations, and our goal was fifty-three. That's really good, because we had a lot of, like, turnaways right away, and so we had to, some of the juniors went around the classrooms, they're like, we need walk-ins, we need walk-ins, until a lot of people stepped it up and...
They recruited really well.
Yes.
Nice.
Good job. I think the pizza helped.
Yes.
It always helps.
Uh-huh. And so that was really good. And then with the blood drive, seniors have the opportunity to apply for a scholarship that student council gives out, and I think this year is a thousand dollars, or is it seven fifty?
I'd ask Bridget.
Okay. And so I think that's one, is it one senior for the blood drive ones? And then student council also gives away two, two hundred and fifty-dollar scholarships to two seniors. And then we are planning to do, like, if you watch the show The Masked Singer this year, for our spring pep fest, sport, like, recognizing sports, we're going to do, like, a teacher masked singer event. So that's what we've been planning.
Teacher masked singer.
Yeah, so we're going to see if there's any, if we can get enough teachers to do that.
Oh, gosh.
I think that's all student council stuff. The musical, they're practicing right now, that's where we were. That's next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. You got to come watch that, it's going to be really good. It's got this amazing dress that just, like...
You're free to give a good advertisement.
Well, she's like, in these, like, scrub things, oh, and they're not scrubs, they're working clothes, and then she spins, and then it's like a beautiful white gown, and I'm like...
I'm assuming somebody's been, we're going to be a KBEK for the production.
What else is there?
We did hear an update on the rebranding, and I don't know how involved with that you two have been, but I did say that given we may act on it through final approval, which really is next month, just kind of keep it here to the ground, or stay informed there, or make sure that somebody's communicating among the student body, because I know that there have been meetings with the students.
Yeah, uh-huh.
And so when it comes to the board meeting that we're going to improve or adapt, it would be nice to have you here, and if not, you, just somebody, though, from the student body, so that you're in the discussion.
And I think Bocky is coming next week to our meeting, because he came to the last one and showed us, like...
So it doesn't need to be the two of you, if you're busy and can't make it, but send somebody, and you're stuck, if you can't be, a couple people, maybe.
And to reiterate, what she's talking about is that we said the same thing today at our meeting at one o'clock, that we really wanted the student council's impact in this, so.
Yeah.
Really, it does make a difference.
You're the ones that wear it and, every day, and need to live with it.
To all the couples.
Year after year, every year, yeah. So, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Go back to practice.
Backwards today.
All right, activities, community ed.
All right, so the wrestling team finished fifth at state, I'm sure most of you guys know that already. We sent eight individuals to compete down there, so I was able to be down there for the Thursday and Friday, so it was pretty exciting down there. Kids did a good job. We sent down an activity bus, plus another small bus. Tried to get two big buses, but we could not find another driver, so we got down the kids that we could. Speed and strength program put on...
Before you go on, I just want to ask one question here. I think, I think these numbers are right, the state tournament, but also that we are now two and fifty-seven with Foley?
Well, Tom had not won, Tom had not won a...
Right. But I think he said that it was either two and forty-seven or two and fifty-seven with Foley now, and that one win came at the state tournament, or one of those two came at the state tournament.
By one point.
And Tom's been here twenty years, and they have not beaten Foley in that time frame. So that was, that was really exciting. I don't know if you guys got to see that on television or anything, but it was just unbelievable, and how close it was, right up to the absolute end. It was a phenomenal win.
It was pretty exciting. Speed and strength program, they put on a demonstration in the auditorium earlier this month, both males, females, they got to do a demonstration. Many of them had maxed out, so a lot of kids were excited about that. The entire student body had the opportunity to come down and watch. Those of the kids that earned letters, they were presented those letters on stage, so thank you, guys, for letting that happen in the school day, appreciate that. Community ed classes are going on right now, we're always looking to add more, but we've got some youth programs coming up over the summer, and we're always looking to add more classes. So, traveling club is preparing for their trip in, going to Italy, coming up in a couple weeks. We have twenty-six travelers going to that. And next year, they're looking at Greece, and as of right now, they have thirty travelers signed up. So it is a big hit. I see, I've been hearing, we've got the Spring Musical coming up, Cinderella, and that's going to be next week. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Chris. Transportation, buildings and grounds.
I'm going to speak tonight mostly about the radon, as I'm required to give you guys an update. As you remember, we had radon testing in February, got the results back. Everything went really well, except for the north side of our big gym had a high reading. So, the next step would be to get a CRM in place, which is a constant radon monitor, for forty-eight hours, which they came last, this week, Monday. Picked it up on... Picked it up on Wednesday. That showed levels were way better. On Monday was just fine. On Tuesday it was reading 4.9 pico kilores per liter and then somebody must have unplugged it and plugged it back in quick and then it stopped reading. So we're still not over the hump. We did have IEA drove up there, HVAC expert went on the roof and looked at things and tweaking things, talked to Kurt about the timing of when goes the night shut off and all that stuff. So we're gonna be required to go back when we have a CRM machine available, I think it would be April 8th, they told me. They'll come back for another 40 hours and try that. If we still have that high rating, reading, we will have to probably hire somebody to mitigate and you know, get some, some stuff on there. So what that looks like, I don't know, I'm still kinda learning this whole stuff, but out of 179 samples, we had one high reading and the south side of the gym was fine.
That's the funny thing, that the north side of the gym was 15 or something.
17.
17. And the south side of the gym was under the four.
2.6.
2.6. And they're both six feet off the ground and radon's a heavy gas and so radon is usually sinks to the bottom and this was at six feet, so I, I kinda think we might have gotten some kind of erroneous reading on that one.
Yeah, and, and we kinda think so too, but we did learn a lot today. So when, every other day we have two rooftop units that take out the fresh, bring in fresh air and take out old, and so every other day they go back and forth. So your rooftop unit four, the dampers were only open about 5% and rooftop unit five was, they were at 50%. And so on Monday we had a favorable reading, which was rooftop five. On Tuesday we had a little bit higher and then it got unplugged, but that was, that was rooftop unit four. And so knowing this and getting some more feedback, now we can go up there and these machines and this automation stuff is not great. So Kurt's gonna have to go up there and manually open up those dampers and when they come back here, but I'm not too concerned yet, but I just want, you know, it's on the radar, we're still working on it. So you have the full packet in your, the full reports in your packet, so if you have any questions, let me know. Transportation, we had DOT went extremely well, the best I've had since I've been doing it. Cory did a great job getting all those buses lined up and we only had, no out of, well, that's in port two. No out of service, we only had a couple foggy meters or whatever, so no big deal, but so that went well.
And we did purchase two vans. We had two that aged out, mileage'd out, that we could no longer transport students in them, so we used them right up to the end. We can still use them for transporting adults, we can use them for hauling garbage, but we can't use them for hauling students, so we didn't buy new ones. We bought used ones, they're about a year old or two.
18, 10.
And have, you know, 20,000 miles on them or whatever, so we did have to replace those two vans.
This isn't part of your report and I just have a question as a follow-up to last month's meeting when there was concern raised about handicapped accessible parking here at the high school. Have you had any chance to look at changes?
Yeah, we have the required amounts for the space out there. The, the one question in the email that I got about the side of the building is kind of, I don't know the definitive answer, but when I check things out, that's a fire lane and it's also a loading dock lane, so if we had those three or two spots on that north side of the gym wall, that doesn't sound like we could put a handicap van accessible to drop the carriages or whatever to get the vans in because the width can only be so long and that gets into that fire lane. So one thing we can do is get more signage out there that in between the handicap spots so that people don't park in between, that's what happened this winter. So we have, we've got one sign out there now, but, so yeah, I'm still looking at it. I, I've been asking around and doing some research.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Principals updates, high school.
Just wanted to mention that Randy and I attended the ALICE training at North Branch School, the two-day training. And the ALICE training is a proactive safety process that you do with staff and students, something that we're exploring based on recommendations and best practices from many organizations, including homeland security, emergency management, education department and stuff like that. So looking and exploring possibly doing some of that in our district in the future.
And I wanted to also mention that something pretty special, we, all of you know about our CNA course we have here. About a month into it, Isle calls and says, "Hey, we wanna do this." And we already have an approved site. They had six seniors interested. Our ALC has reached out and I think gathered one more student. So as of right now, right in this room, earlier today, we had Isle students and one of our students with a second CNA course.
Really?
So our, you know, our class originally is about three and a half months long, about two hours a day. This new one is shortened, kinda condensed, about a month and a half, five hours long. So good things are traveling.
So is that utilizing the same staff that?
Yeah, the same pine tech staff comes here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and they go from eight to one with this new class and then our original class from one to three.
Um, as you can see and maybe you participated in, we had the elementary conferences, which was very busy, lots of families. You can see that it was well-attended there. Another thing I'll cover out here is the kindergarten roundup. It's April 8th, 4:30, 6:30, we'll have cookies and milk, books to give out, lots of information. We always do an art project, so bring in families and, and feature the teachers there so they get to meet the teachers. Lane and Bree will be there to register families. We have five registered in the system now, so, and then right after Kinder Roundup, we'll see how many we get and then that's when Lane will start her campaign and start working the phone nights and trying to get those families in, so we should have an update in May for how far we get.
Student showcase, Tammy mentioned it, we had a great turnout. Might have been the best ever, I think. There was some discussion that maybe we need to extend that a little bit, just so that window of opportunity for parents and students to attend is a little bit larger now that we have the pre-k six building instead of grades three through six. Awesome donations, just to highlight the dairy association, again, they, they were very generous. We had Moore High School Honor Society, PTO, Coburn test given and a number of different volunteers, but it's just such a positive night, there's, there's no negatives that go with it. You see great work, you see great performances and there's smiles on everyone's faces. Just to highlight the calendar, we have MCA testing beginning, April 8th for a couple weeks, we have that Easter break in there and then before we know it, it's gonna be May and field trips and the end of the year stuff, so it's going really fast. We've had a great spring to start.
Brendan, ready? Superintendent's update.
My report, I think, is fairly full. The work session that we had on February 28th, it was clear that we did not have clear consensus between the task force members that attended and the consultants at the school board. So I have met with a few people from that piece to attempt to come up with a workable solution or to try and figure out a presentation, something to bring to the board for approval. We'll continue to do that throughout the course of the spring here. The Health Insurance Transparency Act does require school districts to go out for rate proposals every two years. We're coming up at the end of our second year and so we have met with our insurance broker, Mahowal, and they will be going out preparing the information and sending it out to eight different groups that could bid our health insurance. And so hopefully we will get at least five bids in the past. Prior to the last one, two years ago, we only got three and those three were PEAP, the Public Employee Insurance Program or POOL, I'm not sure which it is, program. And so that one is a required one and then I got two different bids from Blue Cross. This last time we got, Medica is the one that we ended up going with, which came in significantly under Blue Cross. And so this bid process is, is a good competitive basis for our health insurance rates. However, it is based on our utilization and our utilization this past year hasn't been great, so we'll see how that goes. On June 17th, we will be opening those initial proposals. It does allow us to go then back to the, if we have two or three low bidders that are fairly close or if we need more clarification, we can take those back to those individuals and ask them to sharpen their pencil or make some concessions based on a wellness program or whatever. So it does allow us to plead our case to them and then I believe it's two weeks after that then they're to come back with a second bid and then we have to wait two weeks after the second bid before we can actually make a final decision. So the month of June will be, June 17th again will be that initial proposal, then about the first of July, we'll be looking at that second proposal and then by the, around the 15th of July, we'll be making the decision. We should have that ready for you at the July board meeting. Within that, the largest bargaining unit does have the option of either going with the district represent, the district recommendation, or they have the option to go with a different one if they choose to, so we will take, be taking a look at that as well. Communications committee has been talked about a couple of times. The district has been notified by SEIU 284, the custodial group, and Education Minnesota Moore Local 1802, the teachers group, of their intent to negotiate a new contract. Both of those contracts do expire on June 30th. I did attend the MSBA negotiation seminar on March 1st. It was rather interesting this time in that instead of just talking about the largest bargaining unit, they did talk about all of the bargaining units. They not only talked about the bargaining units, but they also talked about the superintendent's contract, they talked about the bus driver group, they talked about all the various groups. So a little different than what I've seen in the past. A lot of it was similar, but there were some very unique pieces to the various components of bargaining those contracts. Through the past couple of months, there have been credits requested for lane change that are not approved by the National Council for Accreditation of Teacher Education, NCATE. According to the teacher contract, those credits for lane change are to be approved by NCATE. We did find three different institutions that are not NCATE certified and so those credits have been denied. I did have somebody come in and ask specifically for more information and we did research a little further. NCATE dissolved in 2016 and so those, as those certifications have been running out, they have not been being renewed under NCATE. And so I've been working with Education Minnesota to figure out language of what and where that went to and what we need to do to have some type of uniform accreditation on those classes so we just don't turn it into the Wild West.
Sure, it's at that.
The Central Minnesota Education Research and Development Council has interviewed their, for their director position. I did report on that last week. I do sit on the board of directors for that as well as the personnel committee representing more schools and the position has been offered to Tracy Fierich and as of today, we, she did agree to a contract and so it was announced to staff, what is being announced publicly today, that she has accepted the position and we have negotiated the contract. One of the things that, working with Tammy very specifically and in your board report each month, you see what our investments, the rate of return on those. Working with First Citizens Bank, working with MSDLAF, getting the information as we've come out of the recession, the interest rates on our investments were down around 0.5% and slowly over the past six months or so, MSDLAF has come up from that to about 2.5% and so in meeting with First Citizens, they have agreed that we'll take a look every Tuesday at the prime rate and we'll go with a 0.35% less, 0.35% less than the prime rate and they'll adjust our interest rate on that on a weekly basis, which should generate for us, based on just a year's worth of that, should generate somewhere around $70,000 additional in interest on those investments. So I think that was a good catch and then in dealing with First Citizens, they thanked us for bringing this to their attention as they do handle money for a number of other public entities, of which they're gonna propose the same thing too, rather than something we have to go in on a every six month or annual basis to redo. So that's where we're gonna go with, with that piece, so. Any questions that you have on that or anything else?
Any questions for Craig?
I'm gonna mention that wrestling thing one more time. I don't know if you guys realize it, but that was really a big deal.
Foley's been a powerhouse for years and years and years.
And I think one of the most interesting things about this wrestling team that we have this year of finishing fifth at state, going down there and drawing the number one seed the first round, I think I have this right, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, drawing the number one seed in the first round and being beat 55 to 10, I think, and then having Foley in the second round for the wrestle backs and then winning the third one put us in true fifth place at the state tournament. If you take a look at that wrestling team, what to me is amazing, we don't have, you know, one or two superstars that went to state and placed in the top three at state as individuals. We have a number of kids that are just really, really good wrestlers and it's across the spectrum that has put the team in the position that it's in. And I think Mr. Youngloom had said at the middle of the season, when we had some injured players, that it was going to be important that whoever was healthy at the end was gonna win and he hit that pretty much right on the head. We were healthy at the end and that really helped, so that was, that was absolutely tremendous. And again, if you, if you watched it in the live stream or if you went down to it, that wrestling, that wrestle back against Foley was just amazing.
They also had an academic award too.
Yes, that is a big deal.
It was, they achieved a 3.09 or better, so.
Thanks for mentioning that.
That is, that is a big deal for a wrestling program. That really makes me proud.
And you miss the seniors that you lose every year, but we've got young kids.
Yeah, we do. We got a lot of talent coming.
Thank you. All right. And cruise the upcoming dates and correspondences going around.
I did.
Sure.
I got an email, I shared it, that we have a board meeting April 17th at 7:00 PM at Grant.
That's you. That's, you sit on that, right?
Yeah, so I got the email, but I saw that there weren't other people involved or, that shouldn't get that email. They didn't, so I'm gonna bring it up.
All right, thank you.
That should be one, we probably should add Kelly too on that.
Yes, we just did. We're trying.
I know, you get it too. I saw you were there. I was just saying I'm not going.
I was going there.
Until he says he's not.
Then I gotta go.
Have I done that to you?
No, you haven't.
Okay, doesn't say.
Fantastic.
Any other board business? Second open forum. Mr. Dress, the board. Yes, Linda.
I don't know if this is the right time.
It's open forum, so yes, it's the right time.
But I'm, I'm a parent in the junior high ALC and Mr. Eaton's my boss. I, I just wanted to say I came in two, two and a half, three years ago as a sub in the middle of the year and I wanted to finish the year. And since that time, I've seen our seventh and eighth graders in this program come and go and some were very successful, some couldn't be, some were sent to special ed. Just this week, on Mondays, Mr. Eaton, I only am part-time. Mr. Eaton usually has them sit around the table, "How was your week? How'd your weekend go?" And I know they do that in other classes, but I've been there on occasion to hear these discussions, you would not believe, would not believe what these kids are coming to school with. And they're, and the thing is, is these kids cannot just be put in special ed, they don't qualify. They don't qualify. So if they're not gonna be qualified in special ed, now, I'm glad that the senior high program is doing so well, GLC, and they really can help. But these kids are coming out of grade school at the most vulnerable times in their lives, you know, the hormones and the crying and all of this, coming to school with this baggage. Those two years could make a difference of whether they even make it to the high school program. Those two essential years, sorry. Anyway, when the, when the kids come in seventh grade, they come in, you know, they've just come out of grade school, and, but they've got one word that is common among most of them. I can't. I can't do that. I can't read, I can't do this, I can't do that. During those two years that they're, they're finding out they can, and it's not just academics. I can't because, I know Lauren, my iPad is, I sleep on this in that room in Grandma's house, because we're between hotel and then a place to live. If I eat too much at home, we've got several brothers and sisters, my mom says I'm a baby. These are actual points. I have no time to get it done. I have to babysit all the time. My parents aren't home. I couldn't do it this weekend because had to go to a funeral. My mom says it was my dad, but I don't know, he doesn't watch movies. Mom's got us a house, this was just this weekend, mom's got us a house, we're moving, but we don't know when, because my dad doesn't know. There's no one, I wanted to be in that, but there's no one to get up to the premises. I have to babysit. I want to get it going. No car. Our car doesn't work, I can't come to school this weekend. These kids are not going to be, probably, even if they make it to the high school program, they're not going to be on the student council, and they probably won't go to Italy, and they can't even travel to sports teams, because there's no money to get them there. Even if we came up with money for them, there's no one to take responsibility. They call me mom. These kids call me mom. Sometimes they refer to Mr. Eaton's dad. They do it teasingly, but they like it. We have a time period where they can share and they do it with each other, things that they would never share anywhere else. On the Mustang local, it says Empower. We've got kids that are gonna go from sixth grade to tenth grade. Granted, there's counselors, that kind of thing, some of them go, but in between, who's gonna stand up for that though? I have been a parent for thirty-eight years. I have raised three children of my own and five grandparents. Haven't raised them, but I don't tell their parents that I do. Anyway, they don't need fancy stuff. They need somebody like Mr. Eaton, who takes their eight paper, puts it on the refrigerator in our room. There's fifteen kids. The teacher's biggest to take kids all the time. He doesn't, he doesn't qualify for special ed. He's squandering, he's squandering, he's squandering. We try, but, you know, I may not be here next year, because as I understand, what could be offered is full-time interventions, classroom interventions. You don't hear these stories in classroom interventions. I've been in classroom interventions for many, many years. What you do is help them with their math, help them with their English, but there's nobody to be there. That's all I gotta say. And believe me, I've been on many, in many boardrooms, and I've been to many meetings, and I do understand money, and I do understand this business, but if there's anything possible, this is the worst time to leave these kids alone.
Linda, appreciate it. I don't think anybody in this room can dispute anything that is said either. We know, we have a pretty good idea of what we have within our district, and yeah, true words. It's just food for thought for all of us, you know, if not there, where do the needs get met? And we all have a responsibility to stay on top of that, because it is their safe haven. It's what's needed before they can learn. Not disagreeing. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board at this time? Okay, now we will move forward. Two seconds. Motion and seconds. Uh, Jensen, Ethan, sure, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes to unanimous later. All right, and again, appreciate everybody being here tonight. Thank you very much, and you know, good rest of the evening.